Good evening. I’m Rick Tainer on the Chair of the Planning Board, and I will begin by calling the role for the Planning Board. Alden Clark.
Here.
Bob Kaup.
Here.
Charlie Palmisano.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Brian Balcom.
Here.
Jim Bluestein is not here, and Rick Tainer here. So we have a full board with one absence. Let the Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, and this will be a little bit awkward because we need to pass around this pair of microphones tonight, so.
Thank you, Chair. I am Chair Heather Shand, the Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. We are here tonight for a joint hearing with the Planning Board. Calling the role of the Planning and Development Committee, we have Connie Preston.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah.
And this item is a committee of the whole item, so I want to acknowledge that we have Counselor Zied, Counselor McCauley, Counselor Donahue, and Counselor Harmon here in the room. Not sure if we have anybody on Zoom, but that seems to be the attendance for tonight. So I’ll pass it back to Chair Tainer.
Okay, the first item of business is this joint public hearing between the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee on a proposed zoning amendment to establish a new Port Plaza overlay district. And this is a little bit unusual because of the amount of interest that we have in this matter tonight. And so I just want to go over what the procedure is going to be, the process we’re going through. So, and I first want to say that this is specifically about the zoning ordinance to permit multifamily housing on what’s being called the Kmart site. And it’s an amendment that’s being sponsored by Counselors McCauley and Zied. We are not here to discuss in any detail any potential comprehensive permit application, but I think, as you all know, that’s kind of the background that we’re looking at here as part of the context. So the procedure we’re going to do tonight is, Planning Director Port will give a brief presentation about the background and context of this proposed zoning. And then the proponents will make a presentation about their zoning proposal. Mayor Riordan will make a few remarks relative to, I believe, his background with this proposal, whether it’s a comprehensive permit or a zoning amendment. At that point, our normal procedure after the presentations are made is to open this up to questions from the Planning Board members and the city councilors. And that would be not just the members of the committee, but the full council, any councilors who are here. After the question period has completed, we will open up to public comment from you and the audience. When public comment, and that would be public comment from the audience and also public comment from anybody who’s online on Zoom. After we close the public comment period, we’ll bring it back to the board and the city council members for discussion. And what could happen tonight, but doesn’t necessarily have to, is the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee separately could vote to make a recommendation on this, or it could be carried over to a future meeting. The Planning and Development Committee sometimes holds this in committee, often pending the Planning Board’s recommendation. And the Planning Board may want to have more information and may carry it forward to a future meeting. In terms of the mechanics, because we have a complicated audio and streaming system here, the Planning Board members are going to share this pair of microphones that are taped together. There’s two microphones to do two different things. I would encourage the Planning Board maybe to tap one to figure out which one is actually going into the PA system. And we’re going to have to carry it around from the Planning Board and the city councilors to use that. The proponents and anybody in the public will have to come up to the pair of microphones at the podium to speak, otherwise it won’t be recorded. And if you have any difficulty hearing, I know there was a lot of difficulty at last week’s meeting. If you have any difficulty hearing, I encourage you to move as close to the front as you can because we are limited by the acoustics in this room. So with that, I will, sorry, did you want to say something?
I was going to swap the presentations and let Counselor Zied and McCauley go first, and then Andy can go after.
Is that what’s happening?
Yep.
Okay. So in that case, Counselors Zied and McCauley will be going first, and then the context and background will be presented by the Planning Director afterwards. Counselor Zied.
Thank you, and good evening to everybody. Andy, you will put up my slides, I think, and then I’ll be happy to get started. Thank you. So, good evening to everybody, Chair Tainer and Chair Shand, and members of the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee, and of course, residents who I apologize are behind me. But I, you know, will do my best to try and speak in both directions and still honor the microphone. So I am presenting tonight on behalf of myself and the Ward 5 Counselor Jim McCauley. We’ve put together this proposal. I promise that, if you want to go to the next slide, Andy, this is not a lengthy proposal, pardon me, presentation, hoping to stay around the 10 to 12-minute mark, just to give you some anticipatory idea of where we’re going with this. And there are four items on the agenda, so I’d like to start by making an introduction, then kind of compare a little bit some of the different approaches. I think both Counselor McCauley and I recognize, both in the public as well as on the boards and the committee here, they’re obviously competing ideas and processes and pathways across this project, and frankly, we need to make the case why zoning should be considered and why it’s a potential viable path, either in addition to or instead of other options. Then we will, of course, talk a little bit about the proposal itself, and then happy to close out and try and address questions. I know the Chair mentioned an opportunity for members to ask and the public as well. So I think most folks are fairly familiar with the Kmart site, but just in the interest of posterity and being as complete as possible, we are talking specifically about the Kmart site. I think most folks understand it’s been vacant for some time now. There has been interest and desire from the property owner to develop it into residential, and that sort of kicked off the process a little more than a year, year and a half ago, to the best of my knowledge. We also acknowledge as sponsors the clear need for affordable housing and housing in general. That is the subject of consistent conversations. If you were here last week for the Housing Forum, if you’ve been following the city council, if you’ve been following the state, it’s obvious that there is a focus on this, a desire and an identified need. And finally, as would be, I think, relevant for any zoning proposal, you want to identify the locus, what does it look like? And so this picture here was taken from, actually, one of Director Port’s slides from a different presentation, so thank you to him, but that just gives you an idea of the site. You know, we keep calling it the Kmart site, but as you can see, it’s not just the building, of course. It extends down to the Low Street side, the abutting property on the right of this photo, and then going up into the Port Plaza itself on either of the other sides. So that is specifically the area that we’re talking about, but there’s a significant relevance to that in some of the future comments that I’ll make, so it was important to start with that. So this is really, this is really the kickstart to the conversation around the process. And the way that sort of we see it is there are three pathways that are kind of out there right now. And most folks, I think, if you’ve lived in the state of Massachusetts for a little while, have heard the term 40B, but it merits some conversation. 40B is a chapter, section of state law, and it governs what they call a comprehensive permit. And it allows developers and property owners to essentially bypass local zoning and go directly to the Zoning Board of Appeals and possibly the state for what they call a comprehensive permit. Comprehensive permit means that the ZBA locally or ultimately the state acts as all permitting authorities that may be needed for that project. So we have a number of permitting authorities in the city. We have the Planning Board, we have the Zoning Board, we have Conservation Commission, et cetera. And depending on the nature of the project, different commissions or boards may be triggered based on the requirements of that application. In the 40B, you apply for a comprehensive permit, meaning that this supplants or replaces all of those things. 40B is available in communities where they are not meeting the 10% threshold for affordable housing, sometimes called the subsidized housing inventory. Newburyport finds itself roughly in the mid-9s, so we are susceptible or at risk for, depending on how you want to call it, a 40B project. So this is crucial because this is the backdrop to this entire conversation, understanding that in a lot of ways, we could essentially be removed from the conversation in a substantive way through a 40B process. So that’s going to be, I think, something to keep in mind. I think residents need to understand, hopefully, that that’s just a, that’s the rock in the hard place. That’s the rock, and we’re up against that, and we need to recognize that and, you know, operate under that environment. So that takes us to the second option. I think most folks recognize that that’s not ideal, that that could be challenging or troubling, that we may end up with a project with some parameters or some features that we don’t like or that are not, you know, keeping the city’s best interest in mind. So in more recent years, there has been the concept of a friendly 40B, which is also called a LIP, a Local Initiative Project. And in that case, there’s a little extra added to the continuum here, which is the mayor working with the developer to execute what’s called a development agreement to try and identify or agree upon some parameters there. We are operating today under sort of this theory that the mayor would be able to sign a development agreement absent the city council, and so the mayor has been working, and I want to say clearly in good faith, to avoid the first one. And that’s why the second one has been in discussion in an effort to do that. And we’ll talk about more about some of the goals the city may have towards any development, no matter which one of these paths it takes. And then the third one, in the third column, is really what we’re presenting or talking about tonight, which is trying to take what some may call a more traditional route, which is zoning plus a development agreement tied together with one another. And that, of course, requires the typical pathways. The council and the mayor have to work together to create zoning in the sense that council, of course, has purview and jurisdiction over zoning, but like any ordinance, it goes to the mayor’s desk for signature, subject to veto, all of those things. And then if and when that were to pass, and if and when that were to be used as the path to actually permit the project, of course, it would need to go through permitting, and the typical process, you know, would be the Planning Board. And that’s surely what we propose in PPOD, as it’s called, the Port Plaza Overlay District. There, you know, this is in a lot of ways a continuum from, you know, least control, least predictability, to most control, most predictability. And I think in drafting this, Counselor McCauley and I feel that the zoning and development agreement gives us the most local process, the most control, the most transparency for residents, and in the end, may have the most defensibility, the part that, you know, gives us the greatest opportunity to ensure that the things that we agree upon in this course of discussion are actually done in the end. And for residents who are thinking about the outcome, the output of this project, you know, you can sit through many meetings, some who have dealt with land use in their area are familiar with this, but seeing the things that are discussed and agreed upon come to fruition is unfortunately not always guaranteed and can be a hard road to go down. And so trying to give that defensibility. Now, with that said, again, with the context that we do have this rock, if you will, this hard place with the 40B challenge or concern there, so everything written in here is with that lens in mind. So I hope that helps explain why we’re here, which is the third one, and gives you a little bit of contrast to the other one. The last thing I want to say on this is that development agreements are tricky in and of themselves, to draft them well, to have them be thorough and complete, and to be legally defensible, and also legally enforceable. And in a lot of ways, the 40B process, either friendly or unfriendly, introduce a lot of potential off-ramps, if you will, and agreements help mitigate that, but in our opinion, not in the same way and not to the same level that, you know, a zoning plus a development agreement would. So that’s the idea there. Next slide, please, Andy. So what are some goals that we might consider for this development? Obviously, if you’re going to write zoning or you’re going to write a development agreement, probably would be ideal to identify why, what you are trying to achieve. So I think, and these are presented, I don’t think they’re in any specific order, but they’re for your consideration. Number one would be for the city to durably exceed the SHI after project, and apologies for the acronym, but essentially get to a point where we are no longer at risk for future 40Bs. The thing is, that’s easier said than done. You know, you can get into the numbers with the Planning Director if you want to kind of geek out on the numbers, but long story short, there are some pretty specific things that need to occur for this, in this development for that to happen. Most notably, we really need to get to a position where we can count all 100% of the units towards our SHI. And this is something that we’ve done successfully with 40R by doing 25% of the units as affordable and ensuring that the entire building, all of the units are offered as rentals and not condo-wise, not sold. And so that’s something that, you know, it’s not something that, say, 40B independently contemplates on its own, and so that’s in part where a development agreement and zoning can deliver. Number two is, and this one’s, you know, near and dear for me, is to insulate the city from private costs. This is always a challenge, I think, with developments, is there’s always these “but-for,” as I call them, so but-for the project, you know, we may have to do things like improve water or sewer infrastructure. Particularly those of us who are familiar understand there’s a sewer infrastructure in that area, particularly in the form of a lift station, that may need to be addressed. I think many residents here tonight will probably speak towards traffic considerations and concerns, and the idea that adding, in this case, you know, around 200 units or so to the area could be quite detrimental to the traffic in the area absent at least some control or some, I mean, I’m not the traffic engineer, but a traffic light or traffic control and things that are also going to make pedestrian safety and things along those lines, which we’ve had a lot of focus on in recent years, fair. And so next would be to create an equitable deal. I think a lot of folks maybe approached this proposal as thinking that this was somehow designed to halt the project or stop the project. Again, that’s not a rational approach, given the 40B risk that we face, so that’s not the intent of this, and I felt it important enough to actually say that out loud so that folks can hopefully hear that. Clearly, creating affordable housing, we started with that conversation at the beginning of this slide deck, and this is a tremendous opportunity with tremendous risk as well, but it is an opportunity. Mixed use is something that has come up. Obviously, the focus is on residential, but it’s hard to ignore showing that map, that this is right in the middle of a highly commercial area, so some conversation around potentially having some small commercial on the plaza-facing side of it, potentially. Protecting the public’s interests, I want to really, you know, drill down on that. Public safety, bikes, walking, I don’t think most folks think of this area as sort of being purpose-built for that. This is an area that was primarily, is and was designed for vehicles. But as we begin to introduce residential, we may need to do those things, we may want to do those things, and if you’re not sure that whether they’re costly or not, I would urge you to look at recent projects. Any sort of hawk signal, traffic control are quite expensive, and the cost has to be borne somewhere. City infrastructure, you know, the PPOD itself, but also in general, calls for the Department of Public Services to deliver to us an analysis around availability of water, availability of sewer. I think that that’s of top of mind for many across the city, no matter where you live in the city. And then just a couple more. Input and transparency. Again, if you think about that earlier slide, a lot of the public process, especially locally, comes out the further to the left of that spectrum you go. And so we see opportunity, for example, in a 40B or a friendly 40B, the Planning Board would have no role, and that’s just what the reality of the situation is. So you get written out of the story. In a lot of ways, the city council gets written out of the story too, and I really equate that with the residents being written out of the story in a lot of ways, and I don’t think that’s necessarily what we want. Then again, I mentioned moving the project forward. And then finally is a loaded bullet that could be the subject of another 10 slides, but it isn’t, which is there’s an obvious question about the future here. You know, many of us have talked about, and the sponsors, the two of us have been approached, about what about the rest of Port Plaza, and what does this mean if we zone this? I think our goal here tonight with this proposal is, A, we can have that conversation? Absolutely. Do we want PPOD to be bigger? That conversation can be had. Is that an opportunity or way to spread out what is very high density across a broader area? Sure. Just remember that, you know, we’re competing with that, with those sort of difficulties around the 40B, but the point is very valid. No matter what happens with this or how it happens, it’s hard to argue that there won’t be proliferation across this area, pardon me, sorry. Whether it’s across the street, towards more of the Hodges area, or it’s in the Port Plaza itself, clearly, if this becomes a successful project, and I think many believe it will or can be, then there’s no argument that it couldn’t happen or wouldn’t happen in other places, and so that’s something that’s really important. All right. Next up, please, next slide, is the last substantive slide, so as promised, I’ll be coming to a close shortly. The PPOD proposal is really, it’s a positive proposal. It’s not meant to come in as a negative thing and say, okay, we’ve got to stop this or something like that, but it is designed to generate housing and appropriate land use. We, again, really want to see the zoning plus development agreement as the format for this, and really, the key there is that they then connect to each other. So if you read the proposal itself, there’s a symbiotic relationship. You know, if the development agreement were to fall apart or die, the zoning would die with it. If you can compare that with some of the other approaches, they are really one and the other. And so the development agreement may carry you through the actual application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for comprehensive permit, but from there forward, it’s very difficult to control where that discussion may go. And if it gets kicked up to the state or down to the state, depending on how you want to look at it, down to Boston, which is how 40Bs work, and I spent a lot of time learning about them, you really are, you know, the table isn’t even in Newburyport anymore. So it’s not a question of, you know, you’re out. And I think everybody recognizes that, the mayor, the city council, I believe all the boards will as well in time, see that too, and so we don’t want that. The drive to SHI, I mentioned that as a goal, so that’s clearly something that we’ve tried to address here in the proposal itself. Parking, the sort of typical zoning things that you see, the parking, the density, and so to give you a broad idea of this, we really tried to utilize 40R heavily. The nice thing about 40R is we know it. It’s been sort of tested in real life. It’s been used, and so we’re not creating something from scratch. But off-the-shelf, 40R does not work for this site. First, for example, it does not provide enough density. You can see there, it’s 50 units per acre at a minimum and 70 units per acre at the high end. That is, that’s high compared to other places. So I hope, again, that that is recognized for what it is, that that was not meant to say, in this case, that we’re trying to take potentially, the developers ask at, say, 212 units and make it 100. We are recognizing that, you know, that’s probably not a reasonable negotiation path to take because of the 40B concern, but also, you know, feelings about what the site can hold or can’t hold along the way. We also made the Planning Board what’s titled the PAA, the Plan Authority, in the plan, but not requiring a special permit. So it is by right. So I think, again, another give there, the 40R also does not require a special permit, but it would at least give the Planning Board a bite at the site plan review. We did try and address subdivision. I think many folks want this to be a nice development and not a dorm or a mall style where it’s a ginormous thing that’s sort of unapproachable or not very pleasant for the folks that may choose to live there. And also, so, you know, we did call out for a subdivision and try and break up the massing a little bit, but all of this is subject to conversation and collaboration and so forth. We did ask DPS, as I mentioned, to review the infrastructure. And the last thing I’m really going to talk about is that this does not, this is parallel, in our opinion, with 40B. You know, all of these things can move at the same time, and what you have to understand is that, you know, we could wake up tomorrow and there could be a 40B application. That’s reality. There could be a development agreement signed and a 40B proceeding, but having this conversation and having this in the quiver as a tool to show that we made a good-faith effort to have, to create economically viable zoning could play in our favor. It could create better opportunities for us to negotiate for our hopes and our desires around this project. It could obviously become the actual underlying law that the permitting is done under. It gives us the best chance, and I think if residents were to ask us, we need to be able to say, we did everything we could to get the best possible outcome. And so I urge you not to consider this as some sort of like competitive thing in saying, okay, we’ve got to have a race to the finish, because actually, we don’t even have any control against who we’re racing with necessarily, and that both Counselor McCauley and I welcome and invite collaboration. We didn’t intend for PPOD to say, okay, this is perfection. We’d always like to think that, but there’s lots of opportunity, I think, to improve it, talk about expanding it, you know, obviously get resident input, but just understand that, you know, we are operating in a certain environment that requires us to think and act in a certain way. So thank you very much for affording me the time. I hope I was close to my time, and I look forward to hopefully hearing everybody’s thoughts and continuing down the path. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Andy Port. I’m Director of Planning and Development, just for the record. I’m going to be very short and brief, I know, because we have two presentations here. Just to be clear, part of what I’m trying to do here, I would talk with the Chair, this is a pretty routine consideration here, is to look at the landscape of what our options are, what the toolboxes are for city officials. So that means the city council, the mayor, the Planning Board, in evaluating what our options are. My goal here with these slides, if you will, is to just outline some of that, so we all have at least a basic understanding of what the tools are, what the pieces are that are at play here. Counselors Zied already covered a fair amount of some of those pieces. You might actually see some overlap here in some of these pieces, but you can see the site in question here. We had actually, early this year, it’s worth mentioning briefly, we had talked about looking at a possible rezoning of a larger area, try to stimulate, you know, essentially the transition from parking lots into more of a walkable neighborhood, if you will. Putting all that aside for a second, there is currently interest in that site that you see marked in red. So this is just a blow-up of that. You see the Kmart building there. This, the red dotted line, is essentially the specific area of Port Plaza that is of interest. This is down by Low Street with the driveway there. This is the specific portion of that parcel or that area that is of interest to the landowner and the developer. So whether we have talked about, and there may be other interest in looking at other areas up here, this is the specific area that is of interest to them. This slide here is just showing briefly the current concept, just to give an order of magnitude or an idea of what is being conceived there. To be clear, this rendering that you’re seeing here, and this information is posted along with the amendment, keep in mind that this is not referenced in the zoning amendment. This is illustrating, and because it is actually, all this intersects together, it is actually worthwhile for all of us to understand the intersection of these different facets, land use controls, how they intersect at this location, and what our options are. So here, in essence, it’s worth understanding what has been conceived on the private side for development here, as we look at what are the city’s options for permitting and control of what’s happening there. The current concept is about 200, slight adjustment to 212 units. 25% of those, or 53 being affordable according to state standards. The current premises that those are also rentals as well. The duration has not been determined definitively yet, but that is being discussed. And there is parking, it’s not illustrating this drawing, but there is intended to be parking underneath this structure. So again, just to give an idea of what is being conceived here from different parties and how this might intersect, I think it’s worth keeping those things in mind. This is just a rendering from that same set of, package of drawings that we received late last year from the landowner and developer, saying, in essence, this is a concept to show what we’d like to do. So this is actually looking from Low Street. You see the driveway there up into the site. This would replace essentially the Kmart building and the parking that’s where the sort of outdoor nursery area was. This is a visual of what it would look like from the Shaw’s side, so imagine you’re up there in the parking lot from Shaw’s and you’re looking across. This is what it might look like from there. These are the renderings provided to us thus far. The regulatory environment, and as it was mentioned by the sponsor, Counselors Zied this evening, there are 40A, this is the first bullet here, there are three, you know, major bullets here. These are the statutes that are coming to play for us as a city primarily here. 40A is the zoning act. That’s what most of us are probably familiar with. That’s how most land use controls, we think of them as being done in Newburyport, right? So that’s home rule, it’s local land use regulations, there are certain limitations under the statute, but it is basically home rule. There are some recent mandates that we’ve talked about elsewhere, we don’t need to cover it tonight, but there are certain mandates in there. But for the most part, it is under, is a home rule kind of situation in Massachusetts, where each community is able to determine its own zoning as appropriate, subject to those limitations. And that’s where we get into some other state statutes that tend to overlap, right? There’s an overlapping web, if you will, of considerations and statutory structures. So the 40B reference, that’s actually Mass General laws, Chapter 40B is entitled Regional Planning, so it’s a little confusing. The Section 21 is the comprehensive permit section. So that’s the section that’s basically saying, in essence, as Counselor Zied said earlier, a developer may come into basically, in essence, and I’m boiling it all down here for simple terms, override local zoning, whatever those local terms are, could be density, could be design considerations, whatever it may be, for a multifamily housing development, if at least 20% to 25% of those units are affordable. And this is, to be clear, this is also generally with the premise that the city or a town is not in what we call safe harbor status, and I’ll speak about that just a minute, but safe harbor status is in essence talking about whether or not the city can basically unilaterally say no to a development that’s been proposed this way because it’s in one of those quote “safe harbor statuses,” and I’ll get to that in the next slide. But in essence, what this statute is doing, and again, I have to sort of boil it down because there’s a lot of legalese in the language of the ordinance or the statutes, is in essence, it’s saying, and this is a statute that goes back years, is that the state and regional housing needs would prevail over local zoning if a community is not in one of those safe harbor statuses and a developer is coming in and saying, I’d like to do something that doesn’t quite fit in the zoning, here’s what I’d like to do. So this override, to be clear, also can apply anywhere else in the city. It’s not just something we need to contemplate here, right now, we are not in safe harbor status, so we need to contemplate that as a city. The other intersection that is not quite as direct for this evening but is worth definitely mentioning is the 40R Smolkoth District. So I guess I should say, I should correct myself, it is actually directly referenced in the zoning amendment as a parallel, as the sponsor said, a framework we’re all familiar with. So it’s basically the permitting process that has taken place in recent years down by the train station. The main point that I think is worth noting about that is it’s comparable in terms The main point that I think is worth noting about that is, it's comparable in terms of being multifamily housing, in that sense, but more particularly perhaps is, in those developments, the ordinance, we chose specifically to go from 20% to 25% in that district as a community, going back years. That has two specific benefits for the city. One is more obvious, which is five more percent of those units in any given structure are going to be affordable, right? The less obvious one, and this is, you have to understand how these regulations overlap, is just the fact that when, and this is a little bit of a particular in the regulations, but if you look at the bottom note that I have there, in all three of these projects, and this goes to the little asterisks at the bottom, all three of these projects permitted to date were rentals. All the buildings, the two buildings that are built today, the one at Haley's that has not yet been built, so the two buildings I'm referring to on Boston Way, those were both built with 25% of the units being affordable according to state standards, as well as the entire buildings being rental. And what happens there is, and that's where the asterisk is important here, and it's important for our consideration as we talk about this zoning or this site redevelopment as well, given what, where the city is in terms of its safe harbor status, is we've gotten a significant amount of affordable units out of that district, but also, by having rentals, the state actually allows you to take credit for 100% of the units in the building on the city's subsidized housing inventory. So that's basically an inventory of housing that is subsidized, right, is meant to be affordable. You get credit for that because the state recognized the need for rental housing, a serious need for that, right? So there's some credit there given for those rentals in that scenario, where you wouldn't normally get credit for them if they were condos. That becomes important because, as Councilor Zied was saying earlier, is we're sort of have to consider as part of our options, our considerations and our toolbox, whether or not we are in safe harbor status is an important consideration, and it does have some bearing on which of these permit processes that you've heard about thus far, the zoning end, the first bullet, or the second one, the comprehensive permit, come into play. The 40R is sort of an indirect reference here, the zoning is referring to a permit process we already have embedded in our existing zoning. So it's, I don't have to go through that at length, but it's captured there. This is the perhaps better, the most important context probably for folks to have here, that may not be 100% obvious to folks, you know, on glancing the surface of these questions and what our best options are. So the basic options for save, what we call safe harbor status, which means, in essence, as I was saying earlier, that if, and this is actually at the text here, see the bottom, loss of safe harbor status to deny a comprehensive permit, just unilaterally say no because we're at 10% affordable housing, right? So some of those basic allowances are, if 1.5%, the first bullet, 1.5% of our land area is devoted to affordable housing, again, I'm just conceptualizing for you briefly, we're not eligible, we have insufficient land area. So next possibility for that so-called safe harbor status, again, safe harbor status giving us a measure of more control over our local zoning, not wondering whether someone could come in and say, "I'd like to push your zoning aside for a second." 10% of the yearly housing units that we have, this is according to census numbers, so the denominator, as you see there, is 8,300 units. The numerator is 784. So we have currently 9.45% affordable housing, according to the state, on the subsidized housing inventory. We are not eligible right now because we're below that 10%, however, we're relatively close to that. We were actually in safe harbor status going back to March of this year. We lost that safe harbor status in part because the state was updating and now using the new 2020 census numbers, they started to use the numbers. So we had been getting to, closer to safe harbor status, and the subsidized housing inventory being at 10% in large part due to the Smart Growth District. The last option there is essentially the one that we have been really making progress in, is that progress every year. So in this case, for us, you know, now and going forward, it's basically 0.5% of the units that we have in the, you know, community have to be created every year that are in that affordable category. So if we're not at 10%, we can demonstrate to the state and to the development team that we're making progress every year. Here, for us, equivalent would be 42 units a year. It's, you know, different by the context. In Newburyport's case, it would be 42 units a year. So again, we have a gap in eligibility because we are not currently permitting or constructing or having occupied new affordable units to bridge that gap, if you will. So going back to something that, you know, Councilor Zied had covered in sort of speaking to the ordinance, keep in mind that as part of the toolbox and the options that we have available right now, we do need to, well, there is oftentimes a preference and a more familiarity with zoning. We don't 100% unilaterally control the options that are available to the developer and the landowner at this point. There are state statutes that give an option for this loophole, whatever you want to call it, for a permit process that's more streamlined. That is intended, I think, with new, good intentions at the state level, however, there are little details that we would need to deal with. And that's why a development agreement becomes important, because, well, 40B may not itself provide every level of detail of control. A development agreement can bridge some of that gap. So the last slide, just to briefly reiterate something, that this is reformatted a little bit differently, you'll notice on my slide, but it's similar to a slide that Councilor Zied had. It's basically laying out the three basic options that we have as a city, and putting aside how that decision's made and how we get from point A to point B. Rezoning with as-of-right permitting, so that's the zone, essentially the PPod zoning that is the primary subject matter for tonight. But keep in mind, because in essence, the landlord and development team, in context here of the state statutes and the sort of exemptions there, is in a controlling position of as to which path they'd like to take here, right? So in essence, if the zoning, the underlying zoning now, or as amended, is not dense enough to allow the product that they think is viable or, you know, preferable, they have the option of going to the 40B process or comprehensive permit process and saying, "Your zoning doesn't work, this is something that works." So that brings us down to the last two of these two bullets. The friendly 40B is a comprehensive permit that is filed with the zoning board of appeals. It's a consolidated permit for any local permitting, you know, but the most important thing is that second bullet. The goal here, I think, is to have some of those key city terms memorialized in a development agreement that captures some of those things that are important to the city, whether it be affordability or rental status or other things like that. The traditional 40B comprehensive permit process, which, to be clear, the landlord and developer already have available to them as a path, does not require, you know, as much level of compromise and coordination on any of those details. There is not a commitment to those key terms in the same way. It's following under the basic state requirements and standards for review of a comprehensive permit.
I'm sorry, the microphone's not picking up.
Sorry, is it not? Is it?
Not working?
Sorry, I just don't know whether it's not working or whether it's just, yeah. Thank you. So, yeah, the options here are basically the three that you see before you, but the question of whether or not something is zoning, in the first case, the current zoning, at least as drafted right now, doesn't produce the concept plan that we've seen from the landlord and developer. So as of right now, it would not be a viable route for those folks. Yeah, sorry. Can folks hear me better? Yeah, sorry. Right. So we have to be mindful of what our options are and what's the appropriate, you know, leverage point for different types of details here. So it is reasonable, I just will say, as land use planners, it's reasonable for us to be contemplating the friendly 40B route in addition to a traditional zoning route in this context. So it's less important, in my view, which permit path is taken. It's more important, in my view, what the end result is and how the mechanics are dealt with to deal with those things. That is in part why having a development agreement is important, along with, say, a comprehensive permit process. There's more, obviously, way more to unpack with something like this, but I think that's worth having that context as you discuss this matter. Yeah, and I'm sorry, I think Mayor Reardon, did you wish to? Yeah, sorry.
Is it public comment?
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, a mayor, I think, can speak a little bit to some of this as well and perhaps frame some of this as best as he'd like, so.
Hi, everyone. Good to see everybody. Thank you, Andy, and thanks for that overview. Thank you to the planning board. I think our volunteer boards in town are so important, so thank you for all the time and all the expertise that you bring to what we do. Thank you to the city council, especially the sponsoring counselors tonight in bringing this path forward. I'm not going to get too in the weeds with all of that. I really just wanted to talk about, well, one, I want to talk about Kmart, all right? So growing up in Newburyport, Kmart was a big deal, right? We had the Blue Light Special. I bought my, I bought, I bought my first cassette tape at Kmart. I bought my first CD at Kmart. Most of my birthday presents came from Kmart, and on a half-day, it was Papagino's and Kmart. So it's been sad seeing this vacant space, right? So I really do think it's the best interest in the city to activate the space, right? And how do we do that? Again, this is a private development, right? So the city's not developing anything here, but I think when you're looking at the paths in front of us, I think all three paths are looking to do something here, which I think is great. What else? I think it really feeds into, too, when we're looking at the big picture around Story Avenue, is, you know, these pockets of villages that we're looking to create around town, right? Like, we have our downtown, we have, you know, what we've done with our 40R. We have Waterfront West, which is out there, which could create its own little village there. And then we have the Story Avenue area, which I would think most would look at that and say, "There's a lot of potential to make that, you know, more pedestrian, safe, you know, walkable, where people can live and work and, you know, access to public transit." I think all those are good things. I also think I look at that, and, you know, again, this is just one of several developments that are possibly in the pipeline in the city, right? So these questions are important around, you know, strain on public services, right? This is something we always have to be thinking about, and I can assure you, we are at the administration level. But you look at Kmart, and to me, it is a site that, you know, could handle the density, right? I mean, that's one of the few places you can put out. I mean, you talk about the Brown School, that's a completely different situation, right? So anyways, I just wanted to say, like, I think there's value here. And then, just to, so people know what we're talking about as far as numbers, as far as I think this is a great revenue opportunity for the city as well. I mean, right now, off of their concept plan, it'd be $650,000 a year in real estate taxes. Right now, for commercial, for the Kmart alone, it's $16,000. I mean, that's, that's something to consider, right? And again, any kind of development there would have to go through a process with a traffic study that would have to be done as well. And again, impact to public services. So again, I'm not going to get in deep with the paths. I think, you know, again, I thought the counselors did a good job. On, what I can tell you is, on my end, you know, the 40B situation, that's real, right? We're not at safe harbor status yet. So for me, I have to prioritize for the city, especially when we have these other developments in the pipeline, how do we get to that safe harbor status? And if there's an opportunity to partner with the developer here, Kaplan at Port Flaza, on a friendly 40B, I think the city has to take a really, a real hard look at that. Now, I think this conversation around this third path, around zoning and a development agreement, I think it's important to have because those, you know, those conversations might not lead to a development agreement that's a win for the developer and a win for the city. But at the same time, I think our city solicitor, if she was here tonight, would tell you is that a signed lip agreement along with a development agreement for a friendly 40B would give us more legal protection, not less, against the development in a 40B process. And that's just something we have to consider, too. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So now, at this point, I'm going to be opening it up for questions, which is really questions at this point, from the members of the city council, the planning and development committee, and the planning board. And because we have this bulky thing that we have to carry around, I think the best thing to do is to start at one end, if I could, and just you can pass it along to each other, rather than having somebody be vanna and passing it.
Councilor McCollough?
I'm doing it.
Councilor?
So this is the right one?
Is that the one with the square base?
Not the square base, the other one.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, and thank you both to the sponsors, as well as the planning director for those introductions. I do want to start by saying, shortly before this meeting, I found out tonight that, when I questioned why, well, let me first say this for the general public. The slides that were presented by the planning director, I want to be very clear that those slides actually don't tie back to the zoning ordinance that we're here to discuss tonight. Those are the slides that were presented from the developer to the city around what they're proposing. So it's a really important difference to understand that those renderings don't necessarily tie back to the zoning ordinance that we're looking at tonight. And then secondarily, so getting back to, so I noticed just before this meeting started that there, all of the renderings from the developer are actually attached to the event page for tonight. And that gives me great pause because we're not here to talk about that particular development. We are here to talk about a zoning ordinance that has been introduced by two city counselors. And when I questioned how that happened, I want everyone to understand that another counselor that is neither on the planning and development committee, which is the three of us sitting here tonight, nor the two sponsoring counselors that sponsored the ordinance that we're here to discuss tonight, another counselor was consulted on how to tee up this meeting tonight. And I have, that gives me great pause because I don't understand why we're sort of putting our thumb on the scale of how this discussion should go tonight. So I just want to really state that for the record. But moving back to the ordinance that we have here, so I guess my first question would be to the planning director. Given that I saw in your presentation, you specifically asked, or you specifically mentioned that the development agreement would be a good way for the city to memorialize what you termed key city terms. Could you explain to me why the PPod or the zoning ordinance that's being presented tonight would not also memorialize key city terms?
Sure. Yeah, just without going too far in the weeds, because there's various different considerations we might have, but the, things aren't exactly lined together right now. So for instance, the zoning text does allow a density by unit count, by acre, a high enough density, but there are certain parameters about breaking the building down, for instance. This is conceived as one larger structure by the landlord and developer, so if it was to be required.
Can I stop you for one second?
Yes.
So I'm not asking about the differences, I do have that question, the differences between what the developer is asking for and what is in the zoning ordinance that's presented to us tonight. I'm asking, why couldn't we use a zoning ordinance to memorialize key city terms that we're looking for?
Sorry. Yes, we can. Again, I guess the main take-up point that I would make there is, we can do, I think, you know, ostensibly, most of, almost all those things. There are certain things a development agreement can cover that are even outside of zoning. It's making up more of a gap, I would say, in a 40B permitting process, note to protect us, than it is in a zoning process. But again, the primary point I would make is that it's important that whatever this sum and result is, that it's of comparable density to essentially the developer, because otherwise, it is not perceived as a viable option in the end anyway.
Okay. And you can stay. Most of my questions are to you, sorry. So also, what if the developer, so say we were to go down the path of not approving the zoning ordinance, what if the developer were to agree to certain things in a development agreement, and then, when they go to the state for the 40B process, those things change?
So these are, essentially, these are two independent processes, right? And I'm not going to serve here as sort of legal counsel per se, so obviously, we would defer to legal counsel on the details, but in essence, those are two independent processes, and that's one reason why some of the, you know, your counselors at least have heard me say before, that I think it's important, you know, however it's mechanically done, certainly if there's a, there's a 40B process, for there to be a development agreement, because that's essentially a private contractual arrangement between the city and the development party. Not, you're essentially, for lack of a better term, insulating those terms in that agreement from some of the statutory weaknesses or case law. Again, this is the best I can do to summarize it, but you're basically trying to insulate it from some of those weaknesses and make sure they are more enforceable. So that then rests on, and I think Counselor Zied touched on it briefly, but that then rests on the precise language of the development agreement, you know, how strong is that language? What is it incorporating back to the key terms?
Okay, so sort of further to that, but to another question as well. So if the city were to go into a development agreement with the developer that says 25% affordable and all rentals, and then the developer goes to the state 40B process, and the state does, because the developer, at the end of the day, probably would want less affordable housing in there, right? And that goes to, they say it goes down to 20%, just as, making an example. Do they get the 20% out of the state, if the state is amenable to it? And then secondarily, sorry, just to give two questions in here. Where, what, how does that affect us from a, sorry, safe harbor inventory perspective? Because I'm reading it needs to be 25% and all rental to get to that.
Correct. I think that's an important point, important takeaway, if you're looking at subsidized housing inventory and the order of magnitude difference, let's say, to your, to your last second question, there's an order of magnitude difference between getting credit on the order of magnitude difference between getting credit on the subsidized housing inventory. This is not, you know, affordable housing is one thing. A slightly separate thing is how those affordable units are counted on the subsidized housing inventory and what that means for a safe harbor status, right? This thing, thing. But how they get on there, it's a very big difference between, in this case, if it's a 212-unit project, getting only credit on the subsidized housing inventory for 53 units, and getting 212 units on the subsidized housing inventory. Very big difference. And that's why it becomes very important, if the goal is to have that addressed, that it be affordable at 25% and rental, because those are the terms established by the state that would allow there to be credit for all those units on the subsidized housing inventory. I'm sorry, the initial question--
Well, so again, if we did it, if the city were to do, the mayor--
Oh, yes, sorry.
--were to do a 20--
Yeah, sorry. So there are two really independent processes, really. So the state has to look at it under their own statutes, right? And this is where, to boil it all down, in essence, there's a lot of deference given to the developer in this, you know, permit process of 40B by itself, you know, without a development agreement, without other sort of parameters in there. That's, you know, something where the state would say, I guess, in the sort of general scenario, they'd say, "All right, we're perhaps buying the argument that it can't be done at this level, or it needs to be done at a lower affordability, you know, percentage of affordability, et cetera, or it will allow you to not make them rental, it only has to be the 25% that are affordable, and they can now be sold as condos," right? That's something I could see the state approving underneath the 40B process and statute, and I wouldn't say it's beyond their, you know, normal for that perhaps to happen. That's where something like the development agreement, and again, this is where I'd have to defer to our legal counsel, but that's where it becomes important to, you know, what is in the development agreement? How is it structured? What does it call for? What are the penalties? You know, is it what we call a specific performance, which is when they have to deliver that, and the courts say, "You got to do it, period." And that, in essence, means that the landowner and developer are beholden to make those two things work together. So if they can't satisfy both together, they have to be consistent with us when they go to the state, right, and keep those together. But as far as how that is dealt with, it's essentially a separate agreement, and the state is not necessarily expected to incorporate those development agreement parameters. It's rather that the landowner and developer have to comply with both of those things simultaneously, really, if you will.
Okay. I have a ton more questions, but I'm going to pass the microphone after I ask this. So I read in this zoning ordinance that it requires 25% affordable housing here. So why wouldn't that be sufficient? How would that differ than if the development agreement were to have 25% affordable?
If there's no development agreement, so for instance, the zoning, there's limitations as to what we can do through zoning, and really, I think the question of form of ownership is one of those things that is, you know, on those margins. So in essence, we wouldn't really be able to dictate by zoning, saying, you know, you have to do them as rentals and the 25% affordable. The development agreement is, I think, meant to make, to link those two things together and make them, you know, tieable, enforceable.
But again, both of those are in the zoning ordinance, so it says the same thing.
I don't think the rental component is called out in there, and I'm not sure whether that would be enforceable, but we can certainly talk about that with counsel. So I just don't recall that the language is, for rental, is in there, so.
All right, I'll pass.
Again, just keep in mind, also with 40B, the statute does not require them to be rental. That's essentially an elective option, essentially, but if it happens that way, that's where the credit for all the units in the project become eligible, so.
Right. I, the round one. I see that. Okay, thank you. So, thank you, Director Port. I just want to remind folks, the last time we had a 40B in this community was Woodman Way, and that was done in 2003, and we got 25% affordable, and the rest were condos. So we can't get, guarantee all rentals. That's part of the development agreement. If I've got that correct. That's the only place we can actually put any kind of oomph to it.
Yes, correct. Correct. Just one little caveat, just clarifying, there wasn't, to my, sorry.
Sorry, yeah, Counselor Shan's correct. Just to clarify, one little caveat, there was not, to my knowledge, a development agreement per se at the time. This is essentially, these details are memorialized in the comprehensive permit that was issued by the ZBA at the time.
Other questions? Councilors? Counselor Harp? Nothing for you?
Nothing.
Okay.
I'll just come here. Okay. Yeah, so Counselor Afros Khan, City Councilor at Large. Let me give some context, and that's why I think it's really important, as we talk about this, that we should know that this was kind of a nexus of a plan by the developer. And that's an important part for folks to know. And it's important for them to see what they proposed. That's transparency. When we hear that the mayor's doing a friendly 40B, which was in the paper, you guys didn't get to see that plan. And I really wanted folks to see that plan. The other thing, then, so they revealed their hand. The developer's showing, "This is the density I want." This other option, which is not a bad option, zoning with development agreement, we could see what the differences are. This is negotiation. It's not a great place to be in. We see why we're in this position, but this is the only way, that by working what they've said they want versus what might be an option here, that's the only way transparently, we're not working in the dark. So what's important in that? When we're ready to talk about the pieces of where they differ, that's where we, as a body, one, most importantly, hear from the public, which is why I welcome that we have this zoning option, so you guys get a voice here. But you're not in the dark because you've seen what the developer has said. So as we talk about the pieces here and digest them, you'll see the differences. And some of those are different buildings. You know, we talked about the Village Node, so I'd welcome the conversation on that. We have here from four to five different separate buildings, as well as some other pieces that are really going to be important to the conversation. So I just really wanted to set that as we think through and go around the table. Thank you.
Can I just add something super quickly to that?
I just appreciate that this might be very confusing for a lot of you, because you're not following all along as much as we are. To just clarify, one thing that Counselor Khan just said, so the zoning ordinance in front of us tonight suggests four to five buildings. The developers, what the developer is looking for is a single building. So the renderings that you saw with the single large building is what the developer is looking to do. What Counselor Khan just referenced with the four to five buildings is what is in the zoning ordinance, okay?
Yeah, that's what I said. The two parallel things, those are the differences. That's what I said. I hope I wanted to--
Agreed. I just think it's really hard for everyone to understand what the developer's looking for, what the zoning ordinance says, so.
But the key thing is, this was a reaction to what the developer put together. That's why I really want us to know that.
So do we want to discuss the actual ordinance?
Questions--
Okay.
I have a quick question.
I'm sorry, no.
Should I go to the mic or--
No, we're not, we're not here for--
Okay.
So--
Questions from the committee--
Okay. So Planning Board.
I'm sorry, just to clarify for the audience, in fairness to you all, typically, there are questions coming from the table first, from the board members first, and then there's a public comment period, so it's not that you're being deprived of one, there will be one, right?
Jenny, do you have any questions?
I, yeah, you know, I'm good for now, really.
I'll go last.
Just, just a couple?
The round one.
Speaking of the round one--
Okay. Just a couple of questions. I just wondered if there's any concern that the area defined is just a portion of one lot? Is there any concerns about getting it, getting it through the whole approval process, given it's just one portion of the lot?
Who is that question for, sorry?
I'm not, I'm not sure who's best can respond.
Go ahead. I'm not sure who would have asked, or the landowner--
I'll just answer as a sponsor, and if you want to add some technical. I think the goal here was a bit of triage. I mean, I think we're feeling some risk around the site that's been identified here, so having a broader conversation in a bigger area is a valid point of conversation and one we should consider, but I think, you know, Counselor McCauley is the Ward Five Counselor, senses that risk. We sense that risk together, and so we thought, we need to address, you know, the leg that's in trouble before we maybe can address the whole body. So are we worried about it? I think there's sufficient argument that this is a unique parcel, and that there's a unique condition around it with the vacancy. We tried to identify those in the whereas clauses, and then take it from there. I don't know if that helps illuminate a little bit in Counselor--
Yeah. Just to address this a little bit, maybe differently, the parcel where Port Plaza is, is 11 acres. And this particular subset is three acres. So there is concern. So in the, in the three-acre lot, the proposed renderings might be 70 units an acre or something like that. However, that would entail subdividing the lot from where it is today. And so that is a concern, right? Because now, we'd have multiple lots out there that could replicate this, let's say, in five or seven or 12 years along the way, which would then be inconsistent with what we're trying to do for the larger area there, namely, create a multifamily housing overlay area consistent with our 40R program for all the other lots that we have identified there, right? And so culling out this one parcel the way it is, without any context of where it is with the other parcels that are part of the same, is a concern. And I think we can better address it through zoning and the conversation of zoning than we can with a 40B type of approach on that.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that partially addresses my next question. I was just wondering if there's any advantages to limiting it to just this one portion of that, which you alluded to a little bit, but I don't know if there's anything more on that point.
I just wanted to, I guess, I guess in part to both of those questions, I just wanted to offer that I think, you know, because of the safe harbor status that we talked about earlier, the decision about whether or not, you know, we, as a city, have talked earlier this year, we had talked about, and we postponed sort of the fall, a discussion about other zoning changes that we could make to the Story Ave and Low Street area more comprehensively, which I think, you know, Counselor McCauley was alluding to. The reality is that in the lack of safe harbor status that we're in at the present moment, that decision of whether or not we're uniquely talking about the rectangular, that we, you know, spot that we see up there versus the larger area, is in some ways being decided by the landowner and the development team, not by the city. So, well, I definitely agree with the ideas of, you know, continuity. We wouldn't necessarily see it surprising here in context for, say, this parcel or area to have a slightly higher density than, say, the city might consider elsewhere going forward, you know, for a larger district. That's not atypical. We sometimes see variation. But the decision about whether we're timely looking at this area versus a larger area is unfortunately, you know, my view, sort of, it's not unilaterally within our control, I guess, in part, so.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Mike?
No.
We're good.
I do have some questions about the zoning proposal, and I guess they would be directed to the proponents. So kind of a basic question is that the ordinance cites and incorporates the Smart Growth zoning ordinance, but it doesn't specifically say that this is meant to be another Smart Growth zoning district. And, you know, it actually says that the planning board is going to be operating in accordance with Chapter 40R. So I guess I was, it seems a little vague to me what your intention is. Do you intend this to be a 40R district, or is it intended to be more of a 40A district? That's kind of the first question.
So I'm not sure that this would qualify for a 40R district in terms of being by a T-stop going forward. However, there's great things that come out of the 40R concepts and zoning that's gone on, and my understanding is you've been part of taking the 40R and making it into multifamily housing as an overlay option going forward with some red line documents that are going back and forth. So that being said, I think the plan overall would be to move this to a multifamily housing type of zoning overlay in that particular area. For this particular concentration, we wanted to be consistent with that. Concentration being the subset of the three acres, the higher density, et cetera, along the way. But we did want to say, stay consistent with the, what we think has worked well, which has been the 40R, and the morphing of the 40R into a multifamily housing overlay proposed for there. To that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I was just confused about specifically citing 40R in the zoning proposal.
Just to be clear, I'm not the sponsor, but I do think I perhaps can clarify a little bit. I did, you know, in talking with Counselor Zee about some of this. My sense, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'll defer to the sponsors, but I think what's in effect happening here mechanically is, the intent, I think, was to capture the permit process almost in entirety comparable to what the 40R district is, but without necessarily, and this is a smaller area, for instance, never mind anything else, so if it's a smaller piece of the parcel, for instance, that's being rezoned at the present moment, that may not be eligible for 40R anyway, sort of with that process with the state. So I think what, in essence, you might be looking at right now here is, in essence, incorporating all that same permit process, but it's still your local zoning district, in this case, not something that, unlike the 40R district by the train station, where there's been some level of state control that has been, you know, asserted there or is overlapping that by the train station. We don't have that situation here with this proposal, at least as presently structured, because as well, it's incorporating all that process and not essentially adding another 50 pages to the zoning ordinance to say the same things, it's not necessarily being submitted to the state through the same review process for qualification of, you know, credits for this and grants for that and so forth, if that helps at all.
So, so I guess, here's a simple way to ask that question, Andy. Would it hurt this ordinance at all to take out the reference to Chapter 40R and 760 CMR 59, and just have it as a straight plan approval authority, without, without, without being part of 40R? Because right now, it's referencing 40--
Yeah, well, obviously, I can't speak for the sponsors. I can only say, you know, from my lens, it would not make as much of a difference to take out that reference, provided that the language that's remaining still makes it clear it's incorporating all the other sections of that, that portion of the ordinance. Yeah, I don't see that as a--
I think, I mean, I think it says that in terms of the permitting procedure. It's just, it's, it sounds like we're trying to have it both as a 40A and as a 40R district, and I, I just think it's confusing.
I think we can clarify the language in terms of the intent. The intent is, this is a local zoning, and this is a 40A.
It's a 40A, okay.
To keep it very short, this is a 40A, but we actually started by copying and pasting 40R into a Word document. It's like 7,000 pages. It didn't make sense to draft it that way. So yes, if cleaning up the reference would help make it more legally clear, but this is intended to be a local zoning district under 40A, with the best hits of 40R being taken out. That helps.
Okay. And the one thing, I had actually hoped that we would have legal counsel here, because I know I've asked you this question before, is this really an as-of-right approval if it depends on a development agreement, a non-zoning development agreement? I mean, that's, that's, I, and I, and I actually wondered, one concern that I have, I've, I've never seen an ordinance, a zoning ordinance, that subjects the zoning to something that somebody else is doing outside of zoning. So I guess that's, you know, that, you can see that in a 40B situation, but in a 40A situation, I've never seen it.
Yeah, I guess all I can say with that briefly, and again, it's, well, defer to legal counsel, but my immediate, you know, reaction to that particular provision, at least, is that it might be perceived as, or treated as, by the courts, for instance, as something like contract zoning, where in essentially, in essence, to get the zoning approval, if the zoning is adopted, in order to proceed with under that zoning, you have to have a contract of some type. And especially here, where perhaps those details aren't ironed out enough, you know, clear enough at the outset, I'm not sure whether that provision right now, at least as presently written, would be, you know, for lack of a better expression, enforceable by the courts, or, you know, past muster, we might have to sort of revise that piece of it, if you will. I certainly understand the intent, but I think that some of the case law that speaks to contract zoning might preclude that, at least as presently structured.
Okay, thank you. One of the, one of the areas I've, you know, I don't have the skills to do this, but I've been wondering about how the requirement to subdivide the parcel into four or five lots interacts with, and so you divide into four or five lots, and you have an open space requirement, and you have, obviously, the off-street parking requirements and building height requirements. Is the 50 to 70 units per acre actually feasible? Has anybody done that study to see whether you can actually get 50 to 70 units per acre under this zoning? Even though it says you can do it, is it, is it physically possible to do it?
So the current lot right now that we're talking about, which is Port Plaza, is three lots.
Yep.
It's already three lots. So Port Plaza, the right-of-way, and a parking area are already subdivided in the lot itself. That has nothing to do with the other area that has the other strip mall and Planet Fitness and all of that, just the area that we're talking about. So it's already three lots. And so you're going to, and you'd have to subdivide it to the fourth lot to get the three acres out of the 11 acres. So there is plenty of land there, and the three acres is handling the 212 units, which, with the math, comes out to roughly 70 units an acre. And we could, there's plenty of room there to accommodate with a different bifurcation of the lot, open space. So, you know, if, if the four or five lots is, is an impediment, we can talk about it as part of conversation. But it's already three lots. That particular area with Kmart, Shaw's, is already three, zoned as three lots.
Okay, so I guess I'm misunderstanding, misreading the provision. It looked to me as if Section D1 says that the Kmart site has to be divided into four or five lots. That wasn't your intent.
Well, hold on. What is the Kmart site?
The Kmart site is three acres.
No, it isn't. The Kmart site right now is 11 acres, and it's three lots. We, there's no subdivision. no subdivision. I think it's, right?
Yeah, it's, it's very confusing.
Just to clarify, and again, I'll defer, you know, to the cosponsors, you know, together or independently, but I think the area that's being referred to here for the zoning is limited only to the same rectangular area that we're talking about, which means that the other areas involved with Port Plaza aren't necessarily implicated by either the zoning proposal or the private development concept?
Yeah, so let me clarify, right? So, parcel 438 is 45-story, right? And it includes the entire area for Kmart, Shaw's, the parking lot, and McDonald's. And it also includes a right-of-way, and it's already zoned in three lots. So, if we're going to cut this down to just quote-unquote "the Kmart site," then we'd have to subdivide this lot yet again, right?
Okay, I, I think that you should probably just delete that paragraph because that's understood, that you have to subdivide the lot in order to, to create the, create a site, right?
That, that would have been a simpler question.
Yeah, yeah. It seemed, it seemed to me that reading, it's, reading this, it looks like the Kmart site was defined as a three-acre portion of the, of the whole Port Plaza, but you're not saying that.
It's not defined that way.
Okay.
Right? It's not defined in 40B. It's not defined here. I don't know where it's defined, right? I go to my map, it's lot 438. It's 11 acres.
Can I go while you're, I was confused by that.
Take, take a microphone, please.
Oh, no, no, sorry. I just thought too that PPOD was subdividing, so that, that helps clarify. That PPOD, the definition is to be one of four or five sublots. I, I think that's, that's what's a little confusing, so.
Okay, so, so let me, so then what, what Andy said, I guess, at the beginning, I think Andy said it, somebody said, maybe you said it. Somebody said that what we were seeing on the screen in terms of the developer's concept was not what the zoning called for because the zoning required dividing that into four or five lots. And that's not true. So, that's, that, just for, just for clarification from the sponsor, you are not intending to subdivide that three-acre area into smaller lots.
So, I, I guess we could be open to that if that's what-
No, but that's not your proposal.
It's not our proposal.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
But I, I want to put the context here for everyone else. We wrote this without the pretty pictures, right? We wrote this with people telling us that this was the concept plan. So, we never had access to this concept plan that was presented, because it wasn't really presented, it was shown. And so, we're playing, everybody plays catch-up a little bit here, right? In so much that we see the pictures of a rendering that maybe something like this might be coordinated to be put in there if everything worked out. But we don't have a plan. We have renderings. And so, we're trying to write zoning based upon what's the reality on the ground, and so that's what we came from. Can reality and the renderings be merged together? Absolutely. But that involves collaboration and, and conversation to be able to do that. And, and I for one would be more than willing to roll up my sleeves and get involved in that to make those things jive so that they're not confusing along the way. But I ask for a little bit of runway and patience when we write the zoning, and we're writing it not being able to see what the actual end result would be.
Okay. So, and so just, just to clarify then, you are not, in terms of writing the zoning ordinance that you've, you've proposed to us, you are not, you are not trying to break up the Kmart, the, the, the area, the three-acre site, you're not trying to break that up into multiple buildings under the zoning. You would allow it, but you're not requiring it.
I think that's a fair statement.
Thank you. That's great. Are there any other questions at this point for the proponents or for the planning director? Yes, Heather?
Just going back to that 40R discussion, if it requires transportation, wouldn't that also, would it, would this ever be considered a 40R option if MIVA was part of this area? Just curious.
Sorry, it's not that I think that would be problematic to have a 40R district in this area. I think this is one of the starting premises, though, is this might be too small. Again, it's been, it's been a while since we worked on our 40R district, but my recollection is that might be something in play here. So, bottom line, I guess, is we might be able to rezone a larger area and get the state credit to treat it as a 40R at their level. But you can effectively get the same local control by referring to effectively the same process. 40R is really, in essence, you could adopt the exact same zoning here locally without the state review of that process. There, we were also, by doing so, getting a bunch of state leverage and assistance for a bunch of things. We got millions of dollars, you know, from the state. So, infrastructure improvements have been done for the city. So, keep in mind that we could effectively do the exact same thing structurally, you know, through our zoning and, you know, without the phrase, you know, 40R, it would effectively be the same. It's just there that it happens to have some state review process.
Any other questions?
Okay, at this point, we'll open the, oh, oh, I'm sorry, you had something.
I did.
Didn't want to.
Sorry.
This, this microphone.
Okay. That one? Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I did my best to read through the proposed zoning with my reader. Did I miss any numbers like, you know, maximum amount of units in the zoning in this district? Is there anything like that that I missed?
I can't hear you in the map.
Is there anything that I missed that would indicate the number of units to be allowed in the zone? Thank you.
So, so the zoning allows a maximum of 70 units per acre, and there are three acres. So, it would be maximum of 210 acres, 210 units.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that you referenced open space requirements and some of the, you know, varied building height, kind of trying to make this thing not be a monolith potentially. But you also heard Councilor McCauley that, again, we're working against tight parameters, right? And so, yeah, we're, you know, to, Andy Port put up that to, for zoning to be a viable path, the proposed zoning has to be viable. Viable is a subjective term, right? And that's where negotiation comes in. They have their definition of viable. We kind of have to carefully push back where we can and be reasonable at the same time. So, I think there's a lot of desire from an end viewer perspective, like the folks sitting behind me that have to look at this, that they don't want to look at like something that looks like a prison or a mall or a dorm, which is very monolithic in view. So, that's where we view some opportunity here to make it look a little bit more attractive, perhaps, a little bit more sensible and a little bit more in scale. And so, to the counselor's question, all of the, that's a, there is no line that says it cannot exceed this number of units, but to your point, there's the 50 to 70 units. We actually have a minimum, which is not typical because we were trying to hit the SHI numbers. We have a maximum. We have open space requirements, and then trying to get some, some variability in the, in the site. So-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob? And this is still questions, right?
Can you go back to the, the site plan image? That's fine. I, I wonder if one of the proponents can, can just talk us through the, the individual parcels that make up the Port Plaza site, because what, what I'm hearing, I think, and I hate, I hate to keep hitting on this-
Sure, it's easy. It's straightforward.
What, what I'm hearing is the, the PPOD that you're proposing applies to the entire site, but we are talking about how it applies directly to the Kmart site right now.
Well, once again, we haven't defined what the Kmart site is.
No, I understand. I understand.
Okay, so, so currently today-
But the PPOD applies to the entire 11 acres.
Yeah, so currently today, right, the entire site, everything you see on the map, okay, from the line straight up, parcel one is the right-of-way, parcel two is Shaw's and Kmart and the parking lot, and parcel three is a little corner in the side that is nine parking spaces with a non-buildable lot.
So, when you say right-of-way, is that-
I don't write zoning, so it says right-of-way. It's got to be the street.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I just, I want to put this to bed as best as I can. PPOD is designed to apply to the area inside of the dashed line. That's the shortest answer to your question. The dashed line is the PPOD proposal that you have. If we want to do, if we wanted to expand the zoning and, you know, we, we didn't contemplate doing 70 units per acre at, you know, Shaw's were to be raised somehow or just demolished. Again, that's the triage aspect of this. So, what Councilor McCauley's pointing out is that, yes, there's already a mandatory subdivision here because they're talking about the area inside of the dashed black line. We're talking about the area inside of the dashed black line. But to get to that, they're going to have to subdivide what is currently a bigger piece of property than what you see here. So, the intent is that they will subdivide to extract the area in the dashed black line, and then that's the sandbox that we're all playing in. Does that help at all?
Questions?
The PPOD applies to the area inside the dashed black line, which is about three acres.
But you referenced four, four parcels, four to five parcels.
Yeah, I realize that that obviously was not written clearly enough, but we're not trying, we're not trying to zone outside of this dashed black line right now, so we need to clean up the language to make it more clear. I, I think we acknowledge and bullpicks. So, I don't, I, I think if we want to get outside of this dashed black line, we have a bigger conversation to have. That's kind of what I intimated during my presentation, if we wanted to do a broader rezone. But right now, we're in, sort of at risk on that dashed black area, and that's what we're talking about.
The reason I'm asking is, I, I think it's important that, that we, we understand that what happens within the dashed line needs to relate to the rest of the 11-acre parcel eventually.
We are in a 100% agreement on that.
There needs to be standards related to that.
Absolutely.
And, and so anticipating that and letting those thoughts be reflected in the requirements for what's inside the dashed line is really important to talk about right now.
Agreed.
I'm trying to understand whether the PPOD is intended to apply to all of the 11 acres or just the Kmart.
The latter.
I think there's some language you need to clean up.
Agreed. No, we recognize that. Thank you.
I just have a question. When you said the right-of-way, I'm assuming it's the top-to-bottom driving path that we're currently all using as one of those parcels, but it was said that the nine parking spaces are unbuildable. Is it also allocated that the right-of-way is unbuildable, or is that a potential opportunity for these structures to change and that right-of-way to change? Only because it was just said the nine acres, the nine spots are unbuildable, so that just kind of went into my head of, is that right-of-way unbuildable?
Councilor McCauley says he doesn't feel that the right-of-way is marked specifically as unbuildable, but just to keep us on PPod, it, it's not part of this, you know, it's not part of this proposal. We're inside the dashed black line, you can kind of see the, the road kind of hugs the left side of that. But it, you know, I think the intent is they're going to need that, continue to need that for access anyways, but that's when you get into the finer points of the site plan and how they're going to actually flow traffic through the site and so forth. Okay?
Okay.
Dash black line. Thank you.
Are there, before I open to the public comment, are there any further questions to be asked? Okay. So, I'm going to open up the public comment now. You'll have to come to the, to the microphone here and speak here, and you will have, just, just come up. I don't, I'm not, don't need to recognize you. And please leave, I'm going to have a timer here, going to try to keep it at three minutes per, per presenter. I think that should be enough. Go ahead. And please introduce yourself, give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Erica Vaughn. I live on High Street. I've been a Newburyport resident for nine years. I have three children, and they are ages 10, six, and three. So, each year, we try to get them into the lottery for public schools, and you can't get in. So, I guess my question is where all the kids, where are the kids going to go? Where are they going to go to school? Each year, my kids don't get into the lottery. My family has had to pay over $40,000 for preschool and pre-K because you can't get into the public school. And once they go in after preschool, pre-K, the schools can't handle the kids they already have. The Brezner hand has a new principal every year. They can't handle the needs of, like, the, the special needs, the, the kids that need extra attention. My daughter was in a situation where the teacher had to stop the class, get the kids out of the room because a child is throwing things at all the children, pencils, pens, they're hiding under their desks. The teacher has to stop the class, stop the learning because we don't have the resources. This child probably needed a one-to-one aide. Newburyport doesn't have the resources to take on all these extra children, and it's, we can't handle the kids we have. So, I don't understand when you have a sinking ship, how you can add on more passengers. And I know the mayor is sad that the Kmart's empty, but I'm sad when kids don't get to learn.
Thank you. Yes. Name and address, please.
My name is Nancy Salliers. I live at Six Woodman Way. I've been there for the past year. For 16 years, I lived on Russell Terrace, which is a block away. I have been raising concerns since the CVS proposal about traffic at the Low Street Story Ave. I think Jim has received at least a few of my emails. I was at all the CVS meetings, and now I'm here to raise once again my concerns about traffic. People, drivers, turn on the no-turn-on-red all the time. I may be walking across the street with my walk symbol, and cars have a green turn light. It is dangerous. It's the first time I've ever heard anybody say we have not looked at this area as a pedestrian area, but there are some of us who are walkers. When I drive from Woodman Way to cross over to Low Street, people are driving through the no-turn-on-red sign. People coming up Low Street, particularly in the afternoon, there is a backup of traffic from the schools, from the industrial area that can go back further than the Kmart site. And as a result, when they get up close to Story Ave, they are going to run that red light, at least one or two, possibly three cars. I know there was a blinking yellow light put in as a pedestrian crossway. Many times, drivers blow right through that, including last week when I stopped for a woman and her child, and a car pulled around me. Fortunately, that child and mother were not hit. I beg you, I implore you, please look at the traffic if you are adding another 200 units. It is a very dangerous intersection. You can also talk to, I think, the firemen and the ambulance drivers who are coming up Low Street or trying to get onto Low Street. They are blowing their horns, and cars are not moving over for them. And I'm glad to see you shaking your head because this happens all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eileen Payton, Five Colton Drive, 28 years here, 21 years public school teacher. On that, taking a right on Low Street, one simple solution drives me crazy. The no-turn-on-right sign should be right where we pull up. It drive, well, you know what? It should be not where we pull up. It should be where the red light is. By the time you pull up, you're past that sign. I made that mistake and then have realized it, and I can't tell you how many people have in my car said, "You can just turn right." I'm like, "No, you can't. The sign is behind the stop line. We need a second sign." But I just have a couple of simple questions about the PPOD, and sorry if this is too simple, but it seems to me- simple, but it seems to me, if we vote, I want clarification on this, if we vote for zoning, then the developer cannot just simply go to the state with the 40B application and work with the state. Is that true? Or is that way too simple? It's okay if it's way too simple. I'm not going to complicate it with another question. I'll email Jim.
To be clear, that's a great question, actually, and it's partly one of the primary considerations we have to have is the developer can still say, "I would like to go the 40B route," to be clear. It's a separate permit path available to them.
Okay. But will the state consider that we have that zoning in place?
I have to basically summarize to the best of my ability, an array of, from the statutory language and the case law and so forth, in sum, there is a strong deference in this context of not having safe harbor status. There's a strong deference to the developer's idea, understanding of what is financially feasible, what can be done in terms of density, financing, et cetera. I can't say I'm, you know, fond of that as a land use planner, but that is how the process works. In this process, there's a fair amount of deference to that. So even though we might say, "Hey, we think we've got density that's of a certain, you know, order of magnitude." It may not be quite as much, maybe it's, you know, close. If it's not quite as much, there is a fair amount of deference given to the developers, essentially pro forma and what is viable in essence. I'm boiling this all down for you very simply, but that is essentially something that we need to be mindful of.
It's basically a hail mary here that we're trying for. And my other question is that, so the developer wants to build one large building, and then I heard it sounds like the planning board or the town would really prefer it to be a few different buildings. And I'm just curious about the purpose of that. It sounds like, number one, aesthetics. I can also understand from a huge building, it would be better community for the residents if it was smaller buildings, and I also could understand it could be a problem if they're all trying to pull out of that under garage, garage, under that under garage at once. But I just, I just wanted a little clarification on the point of, you know, multi-b buildings versus one.
It's mostly aesthetics and quality of life. So, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Chair of the City Council, Lisa Mead, Mead Talaman Costa, 30, Green Street, on behalf of Port Plaza Realty Trust, the owners of the property that's under discussion here. And I just want to put in some context. For actually over two years, Council McCully, the former administration, and then when the new mayor came in, and still Council McCully, came to the owners of Port Plaza and myself requesting consideration of the site being developed as residential housing. And it's not what my client originally does with their, with that property, obviously. It wasn't in their mindset, but the city made it really clear that they were very interested in having housing here. And so my client has moved forward cooperatively with the city and worked very close with the city for the past year and a half. Council McCully has been invited to be a part of those discussions and has seen the plans and has been given those plans previously as part of those discussions. I'm here to say that we've submitted a letter, my client submitted a letter to the planning board and to the city council. They're not in favor of this proposal. To use their language, it precludes any financially feasible multifamily housing proposal with 25% affordable, consistent with either 40B or with this, with this zoning. And it's inconsistent with what we've been discussing with the city for over a year and a half. We have made multiple attempts at various zoning changes. Poor Andy and his staff have had to read red lines and Rick that we have done with various 40R proposals. And that's how we are where we are and how we've been working cooperatively with the mayor related to a development agreement. This is not buildable. The zoning is not buildable in a financially feasible way with 25% affordability as proposed. My client is not in favor of it and would hope that the city doesn't pass it. And if it does, we'll continue to work cooperatively with the mayor no matter what, but it won't work as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, name and address.
Amanda Zeller. I live at 6A Noble Street. Pardon my raspy voice. I want to thank all the thorough, detailed explanatory work you've done because, as a general public, this is incredibly difficult to understand, and I appreciate you taking time to help us understand. Last week, you had a wonderful meeting that helped us understand the planning process that goes into providing affordable housing in Newburyport. And at that meeting, there was a moment of frustration between someone in the public and someone who is an expert and a professional who lends their time to help us understand this. Understandably, the professional was frustrated with the general public and said, "You've got to trust the process." I really want to trust this process, but there are pieces of it that feel like that process is leaving me as a resident, two blocks away from this, out of the process and leaving it to a developer instead. I'm not entirely clear which option I want because I don't get it all, but I want an option that says that me living two blocks away has someone who's going to represent what I have to live with every day honorably and without catering to a developer instead of the people who live here. What I'm hearing also from other people is a frustration at an already-present lack of good and safe planning in the area. I have children on bikes. The result hasn't been good. I'm just going to say that because there is a lack of safe, accessible areas for people to populate in this area. And I'd like to believe that where I live in Newburyport is worthy of the same amount of care, zoning, and attention as some of the more popular and pretty and historic places of this city. And that's where I come into this, to think that, I don't want to think that I live on the part of the town that doesn't count and doesn't need the same amount of planning and process for the residents who already are there and the families that are there. This is not against affordable housing at all. This is asking for respect for the people who live there through a respectful process for all of us involved. I know it's a private developer. I know we don't have a whole lot of say in everything that comes out of it, but you all are in very powerful positions to help us plan appropriately for the people who are here and for the type of city we want. And I ask you to do whatever gives you the most say in that because you represent us, and I appreciate all the work you do to do that. So thank you for these meetings and for the time you take to explain to us who don't always understand all the terms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Mullins on 7 Parsons Street. Generally in favor of the affordable housing approach. I just wanted to give you an impression that a lot of people have in town that's rather unfair perhaps to the Port Plaza owner, is that somehow that the owner has just decided that because he doesn't like the zoning, he can go ahead and change it and, and approach the city and get it to be accommodated to him. So I heard tonight that there was a proposal, and of course, everything's up in the air, about being a mixed use. And so I was wondering from Andy Port's perspective and from this board here, if, what would be the zoning requirement so that we could have still a commercial area on the first floor, right along with the rest of the Port Plaza, and then, of course, the residential on the second and behind? And just wanted to know if that was just going to add more difficulty, but it would be a good impression for the rest of the city because people are like, "Well, he just decides he wants to change the zoning."
Great question. I know this is not an unsurprising question, you know, are we going to lose any commercial space, you know, that adds vibrancy and something that we refer to in urban design as active first floor or frontage, right, to active frontage? Those are beneficial things to, you know, to have. We have actually suggested it would be beneficial to maintain some of that. I think, you know, at a bare minimum, we think about the downtown, and the comments that were just made, which I think are great, you know, trying to basically make sure this is also a neighborhood, right, trying to, you know, fulfill that future vision, that this can also be a walkable neighborhood too, right, not just designed for the automobile. Well, having shops on first floors, just like we have downtown, having residences above, that would be something, you know, nice to have. Right now, there, it's not 100% clear that there is a willingness or ability to incorporate the commercial on the first floor. However, we have suggested that that would be beneficial. It would make sense from our perspective. Again, going back to safe harbor status, that is, is not necessarily unilaterally 100% within our control at the moment, but, but I would say, generally speaking, as a land use planner, it is preferable to have those things generally. To be clear, I'm not bothered by having a singular individual building that does not have that commercial space, but I am concerned about having a larger district or having just a pattern of every building being like that. That is not a walkable village node. That is just a complex of residential buildings. So I think, you know, putting aside for a second whether we can mandate it right here, you know, that's another piece of it, but I think, generally speaking, it would be best practice to try to maintain that in this area, that commercial component or first floor usage, rather than eliminate it, you know, outright and have it be only residential, if that helps.
Hi, my name is Kay Gray. My husband and I have been living here for 16 years, though he was born here. Our two children were born here, and our grandson was born here. Three generations, Newburyport.
And your address?
Sorry? State Street. I live on State Street. I'd like to follow up with what you said about wanting to follow the, trust the process. I don't. I don't trust it. Mainly, I mean, I have feelings about what happened last week, but something that was said, brought up tonight about what tonight's meeting was supposed to be about and how one person was contacted about how this was tipped off to be presented, that doesn't seem very on the up and up. You're all supposed to be working together, and we're supposed to trust you to do that. We have limited voices here. And no, I don't think that the proposal should have been, continued to be presented this evening because it sounds very vague. And again, should not have even been part of the conversation tonight. Doesn't seem like it's very polished to even be presented yet. I'd like to also play on the part about the traffic. It's never been considered pedestrian in this area. I'd like to bring up something that happened right in front of my house. It wasn't considered pedestrian on State Street at the Rotary until someone died. They got hit by a car and they died, and they finally put in a stoplight, which also, people still run when it's red. So this is a problem. I wish that we could have addressed tonight what was supposed to be addressed, which was the, now I've lost my train of thought, sorry. The zoning ordinance. And I wonder if we're ever going to get that first before we start talking about people moving in to build things going over people's heads. It's just, this, this has, this has just as bad a feeling to me tonight as it did last week. There were questions, I felt, that still weren't answered from last week, and I'll just chew on those because that was last week and we're dealing with this. So I think there's way too much that has been overlooked, not polished, too vague, and still, again, someone was discussed about this being tacked on to tonight's discussion, and it should have been stopped. It should have been, nope, that's not tonight. So I don't trust the process, and I would love someone to change my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. And perhaps I should have, at the outset, explained something, which is that the way the process works in terms of a zoning proposal, which this is, is that it goes to the city council, and the city council refers it, votes to refer it to a joint public hearing of the planning board and the Planning and Development Committee. So that's what we're really here for. We're here because a zoning proposal has been made, has been submitted, you know, sponsored by two city councils, submitted to the city council, and the city council voted to refer it to us as they should have done. That was the proper procedure. And so this is, you know, some of the questions that have come from board members and planning board members have been to the point of the specific zoning provisions that are in that. And perhaps we could have done a better job of presenting the details, going through the zoning ordinance, because that's something we didn't do. There was no actual presentation of what's in the zoning ordinance, and I, and that may be part of your frustration. But that's what we're here for, and if we don't get through it tonight, we'll continue it to another meeting and give you more opportunity to learn about it and ask questions. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment on it at this point? Yes, come on, come on forward, and again, name and address. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deb Giorgio. I live on Clipper Way. Two things. First of all, thank you for your work. It's enormous, it's exhausting, and it's totally uncompensated. Secondly, what effect does the letter that you received today from your private partnership have on all of this work that you've done?
Sometimes it's not clear exactly who the question's being directed to, so the sponsors are very, sorry, is that working better? Yeah. Sorry, our IT setup. I'm not sure if that question's 100% directly, you know, addressed to me. The, the only question I think that was raised there was voting threshold, whether or not the city council might amend the zoning ordinance by six votes or eight votes. I'm not convinced, frankly, that's a significant bearing one way or the other on the proceedings or discussion that we have to have here, one way or the other. Certainly, there's always the question when a zoning amendment is considered by the city council. Typically, the zoning amendments are done by two-thirds vote, by the way. There are certain things that are allowed as a simple majority vote, but the basis or the nature of the discussion that we're having, I'm not sure significantly changes here. There's still essentially two permit paths that could happen here. They're not 100% within the city's control, which is elected to be taken here. A friendly 40B is preferable to an unfriendly, if you will, 40B, but also zoning could be a viable tool too, at the right density or with their similar parameters. At the end of the day, I'm not sure that what's really going to matter, I think, here is, is there something that we can get to that's viable that is sort of a compromise or working situation between the landowner and development team and the city? And again, that all goes back to the structure that we have, so, and I definitely appreciate that some of that may have feel like it's extra added to the, you know, understanding of the zoning ordinance, but frankly, as a land use planner, I definitely would say, irrespective of any individual positions that people may have, it is actually entirely relevant to the options that we have and the considerations that we need to keep in mind because, as we local officials, and that's up to the mayor, the council, planning board members, advisory, us as staff, we have to be mindful of all the tools that we have in the toolbox, and that means understanding all those statutory options and how they fit together. So respectfully, I do think it's actually relevant to have that context irrespective of what people may think about any particulars involved.
So we have somebody, Jess Stone, on Zoom who'd like to speak?
Jess, if you can hear us, if you'd like to address the board or boards.
Hi, I would, thank you. How are you?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. So my name's Jessica Stone, 30 Hill Street. I've been a resident for 25 years. I have three children. I have put through all the way from daycare, preschool, through high school in this city. I'm also a first responder who has taken 911 calls in this city and the surrounding towns and areas, and I will tell you that Low Street is a major concern. I have worked calls when I'm not even in uniform on my ambulance on that road. I've done it in the parking lot that we are referring to today while I'm just buying my groceries, and I am waiting on standby as the person on the in-between until the fire department arrives. And that's one of my questions, is, is the fire department, PD, and EMS chiming in on what your plans are? And also, I'd like to also say that everybody's sort of touched on things I wanted to speak on, but when someone said they didn't trust the process, I have to 100% hands-down agree. I'm somebody that has needed 40B or 40R or anything, and today, I would deny ever wishing I did that. It feels to me that every meeting lately, nobody is on the same page, and I want to just make reference to page 29 of 41 of this Harvard University grad PPD that you're referencing. I've actually been reviewing that throughout this meeting. And on that page, it does specify some things on the city's end regarding the way that things are balanced and the administrative's capacity to pull this off. And I'm telling you, with what I've seen in the last six years here in the city, I don't think you have what it takes to make this work. I would love to see people move into homes here, but I do not think more residents from somewhere else helps. I think the people that live here need houses that are affordable for them, and it used to be that way, and it no longer is. And I feel like all of these 40B, 40R, 40XYZ, you name it, they're all really just helping the city with grants and funding to go to things that were just budgeted inappropriately previously, but it's really not helping anybody that lives here or that has invested their last. not helping anybody that lives here or that has invested their lives here. So I guess at this point, it's like, if you can't afford to live there, I don't know what to say. But that's not a safe environment for anyone to live. You can barely even cross the road or get your kid to school right now without having a panic attack because it's bicycle lanes and it's people running and it's nobody paying attention to anything. And then some of us are going 10 miles an hour and your 25 mile an hour signs that are just randomly placed, which are supposed to be a helper, are actually in the way. So I'm a little confused on, on how all of this is merging. And I feel like this conversation really should be being had with the state. I think if we're trusting one development crew with the decision in the future of our city, we're throwing away the very value of the reason why people live here and want to live here. And I think that is starting to become, I think houses will free up because people don't want to live surrounded with this and always in negotiation with this. I don't think there's any peer reviews that are in set for 40B or 40R.
Okay, thank you, Jess.
That's that.
Yep, thank you. Do we have anybody else remote or in the room who wishes to be heard?
All of you.
Okay. Okay, in that case, I will close the public comment period. And just so you know, in case you're going to get up and walk out, if we continue this, we would continue it probably to the next meeting in two weeks and we would, again, open up for further public comment at that time. This would not be your last opportunity.
If we could also clarify, I'll defer the chairs, but if we could clarify what the process might be, whether the planning board and city council might be doing it together or separately.
Yep. So, so at this point, I guess it's just open now to discussion by, by city councillors, the committee and other councillors, and by board members. And after some discussion, after we had enough discussion, we will move to determine whether we want to make a recommendation tonight or whether we want to continue this to a, to a future meeting. So I'll just open it up now and we'll again have to use the microphone. I can be the emcee. Oh, yes, I don't have to do much, do I? You're right here.
I'll start, sure. That one, okay. Am I good? Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is what the biggest difference is between, you know, going with the zoning and allowing the developer of the private property to pursue a friendly 40B. If they're both basically giving us, well, you know, similar controls, similar controls, the same number of units is my biggest thing. It's like, it doesn't seem like the zoning is limiting what could happen there by my estimation of what they were talking about anyway. So I'm not really sure what's weighing one or the other heavier. I think to the public's point, you know, traffic is huge issue concern. The safety of pedestrians in that area is huge. And the number of units, I mean, I think we've all heard that same lament. So I don't see what the zoning is changing here that isn't already kind of been proposed predominantly, I guess.
I'll take a stab at that. And I had a totally different understanding of the zoning before coming into the room than I do have now because of that question about subdividing the lots. But I think you're right. I think that there's, there's no difference per se in the number of units that would be achievable either through the 40B process or through the zoning process. I think the key difference is, and I think, and also the, there's a development agreement in the friendly 40B and in the, envisioned in the zoning ordinance. So I think the key difference is in the zoning approach, the city council gets to have some input that they don't have in the 40B approach. And the second key difference is that the permitting authority in the zoning approach is the planning board and it's as of right compared to the zoning board under a 40B process. So unless I'm wrong about that, and I certainly asked the sponsors if they're, if they disagree with that point, it seems to me that we're talking the same level of density. And I'll let you, you can answer it, too. But it's kind of, it's the process more than the, more than the actual outcome, I think. So I'll start with Andy first.
Yeah, I would agree with most of what Rick just said. I just, I would just add that, you know, if there are a few other particulars in there. For instance, I think the building footprint size limitation in the text of the ordinance right now would be inconsistent with the concept plan. So for instance, if that was intended to be consistent with it or make it facilitate that, that might also need to be tweaked. So there might be some other smaller particulars, but I think generally speaking, the unit capacity is going up to the 70 units breaker. And it was clarified earlier tonight that we're really limited to talking about the dotted area that, you know, was shown there, not the larger Port Plaza parcels, per se. But, but in essence, there might be a few other particulars. But I would agree that there's the potential for the zoning to be tweaked to have a comparable sort of density or outcome. But again, there might be a few other particulars that have to be tweaked in the process.
So I'd ask Councilor Zied, yes?
Yeah, I think it's a fair question, but it's not a very difficult answer. There are four differences between the 40B friendly and the zoning approach. Number one is control. So we recognize that our control is limited by the backdrop of having the unfriendly 40B as a backup. However, this is more nuanced than on or off, or yes or no, or black or white. There's a continuum there of negotiation. So we have really, really would be, I think, capitulating all control entirely if we go more with a 40B style route. We will try and claw some of that back with a development agreement to the best of our ability, but it's not the same. That's number one. So control. Number two is absolutely process. The people behind me are frustrated because they feel like they walked into the middle of a movie and they have, because this conversation has been kind of happening in different contexts. But this is the first time, I think, if they're coming to this meeting, they're sort of seeing pictures and their zoning and it really feels like they walked into the middle of the movie and not the beginning. So the process is critical. If you look at how a 40B works its way through, it's primarily driven through the zoning board of appeals and they have to walk a very fine line between negotiating and tripping a wire that's going to cause the other party to push the discussion down to Boston and then you lose all conversation and control. That's an extremely fine line to walk and a very difficult process to ask, in my humble opinion, a volunteer board to do because they operate now outside of zoning. They just have no context, no rails, nothing. Number three is transparency. So, you know, you've got to deliver to people something they can see, hold, and understand and ask for accountability. I think that's fair for them to do so. A 40B diminishes a lot of those opportunities. And, you know, there's nobody here from the state legislature from 1969 when they passed 40B, but they would need to answer for that. But you could have somebody who doesn't, hasn't even ever heard of Newburyport deciding the outcome. That's not inherently transparent. The public comment becomes diminished. And the last, and actually frankly, most important for me, is enforceability. So, you know, I'm a huge proponent that, you know, the development agreement plus zoning creates the most enforceable environment. So in other words, you can write all you want in a development agreement, it's only as good as your power to enforce it. And so if you have a 40B friendly, so you have a development agreement and it goes sideways on you, and I've been to a meeting where somebody said, there's no such thing as a friendly 40B because it's only friendly until it's not, and then what? That's a difficult position to put yourself in. And we may end up there. That's the unfortunate reality that we've tried to communicate here several times, that we are not 100% in control of this process due to being underneath the threshold. But if you're, into your question, Chair, you asked, you know, what's the connection between the development agreement and zoning? That just seems not something we do often. It's true. I've been on the council for nine years. We don't do this very often. But we actually do have some recent precedent with mobile where we went the other way. We had a development agreement that predicated a zoning passing in order to be effectuated. So there was a nexus. So it's not entirely new. We're just coming from the other direction now. So my view is if you create a development agreement and there's a breach of that agreement, then if you have zoning and contract in the form of a development agreement, you have two areas of law you can fight on, contract and zoning. If you have a 40B, you only have contract law and now you've got to go argue to a court, you know, here's how I've been injured and here's how I should be paid because of something I, I think clearly tonight, you already heard that apparently the 25% is questionable. That's news to me, but that's a big deal. That's a huge tenet of this entire thing and whether we should be friendly or not, if we so choose to be as a city. So those are the four areas, control, process, transparency, and enforceability. So they may, in the end, develop the same building, maybe. I actually think there'll be improvements to the building under zoning, but it's theoretically possible. But I think it'll, it'll be much better across the point. And again, if you agree with us that the SHI, hitting that SHI is a core goal of this, this is a much better way to go to hopefully get to that. So I hope I've tried to give you why it's worth it. And just while I have the floor, because I'm probably not going to speak again, or I hope not to, we came in tonight hoping to get your feedback as to whether you would support even going down this approach. We put a lot of time to write it, so, you know, but, and we could put a lot more time in to improve it and clarify it. But if there's not assent here that that's, this is even a path worth going down and there's a decision that we should just do the 40B, then I think this, we would like to know that, but, you know, have no objection to working collaboratively, either through a continued hearing or whatever, to get the language tight. I actually believe that we need all hands on deck. Everybody has to be helping here with this. This is a huge deal for Newburyport. So we need the council, the planning board, the mayor. We need city solicitor support. We need the whole thing. But we knew we had to come in here and make the case for this approach. And that's what I'm hoping to hear from you all, not, you know, hopefully, you know, certain words in the ordinance. We're very much, I hope we've communicated, open to fixing, adjusting, changing, whatever we need to do to get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Report, someone asked this question, maybe I just wasn't listening well. So I'm going to give you a second crack at it for my understanding. The effect of the protest letter we received, I think, today from the developer on the process, the timeline, the relationship as you've, you know, been managing it so far?
Well, I can't say I'm directly managing that relationship as I speak. Obviously, I'm obviously party to it, yeah.
The city has been engaged with the developer.
Yeah, again, I'm not sure how much that changes. Again, I'm going to defer to Charis, you know, as Eagle Council, you know, for the city to answer, you know, to that final question. But the reality is, is the only thing I think is in play is the voting threshold, the quantum of vote by the city council in terms of a zoning change. But the substance of what's being discussed here, again, I think it all ultimately hinges on, you know, to the point about having control under zoning, maybe being preferable under, say, a 40B or some other process. Again, all of that control, that premise of control is only contingent upon it being comparable to what, you know, is essentially considered viable by the development team. So at the end of the day, yes, you know, zoning could be a viable route there. Putting aside the voting, you know, threshold, zoning could be a viable, you know, option here, but it's got to be comparable in essence. At the end of the day, that sense of control is, I want to say sort of meaningless, but, you know, it's sort of on the shelf if it's not anywhere near to be worthwhile for the development team because they have the other options available. That is not, you know, we don't directly control, you must go to zoning right now. That is not, and well, that's, you know, desirable and nice and, you know, and totally an understandable concept to say, we'd like to have that control through zoning. The reality is, we don't unilaterally control that option right now. So if we want to make zoning a viable option for control, then it has to essentially be modified to permit a density or other details to facilitate a development of this scale, essentially.
Anyone? Anyone else? No further discussion?
Well, can I just make a point? I mean, we should have the attorney here, so I don't know why they weren't. So if we have another meeting, we really do need Attorney North or a representative. So, because there's a lot of questions that I think it'd be helpful to clarify. And then the second thing is, I do think it's really good to have a few slides or something to actually go through the ordinance. And I thought we were going to do that a little bit today so that we could talk about, you know, what are the salient points, since some of us have have seen, what was the option that the developer agreement and the developer was proposing. So it's nice to see how this really, you know, how does that map to that? Because I am completely open in answering the sponsors' questions, you know, how do we all feel about this? You know, I, I am open to seeing, what are the pieces? Because we know this is a, it's an unusual, I think it was best said that, you know, the rock in a hard place and what's the rock here. I completely agree with those sentiments. But in order for us to get to a place that publicly, being in this public forum where everyone's watching, including the one who we're trying to work with, then it's best that we do use a way of working collaboratively together, recognizing the points that, that are critical to getting something done there. I also think it's a miss that we're not looking at the whole location. And I remember working on the MMPTA communities area. That was something we talked about, you know, when we were talking about zoning, what was the option here? And we didn't talk about the fact that there was, through grant money, someone to take a look at it and see what would make it like that village center, have the pedestrian access, safety, using maybe the smart growth district design elements that were vetted and approved. There's a lot of work we already did. How could we really take it beyond even this space? So we are in a reactive position here. This is reactive. Let's acknowledge that. We are in a reactive position where we're just looking at this site because this is what the developer has targeted. But we should not miss, as we have these conversations, what's the potential for the whole area. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Wright?
So there's been a lot of discussion. I think it's all been good discussion. I'd like to bring it back to process from, from the, from the planning and development subcommittee. As a member of that, I would recommend more work to be done on this from, from our perspective. So, you know, I wouldn't want to speak for my fellow councillors on the subcommittee, but I think that this needs more work. I think we need to, now that we've got the broad background, I think we need to look specifically at the ordinance and the zoning. And, and that should inform us. Unfortunately, we're, you know, we're fighting with one hand tied behind our back because we don't know what the, what the, what the city's negotiating with the developer. That's a private discussion. We have, we don't really know what that is. So, so we're relying on the city to develop an agreement that we're not a party to as of yet. So that makes it difficult to have a conversation in either approach. But from, from my perspective, as far as the process goes, I would recommend that we, that both the planning board and the, and the planning and development subcommittee, you know, suspend this and move it forward to another date.
Thank you, yes. I actually agree with you and Counselor Khan that the, you know, we, this is, the presentation we've had has been a presentation of really more of principles than of the details. And I think that usually when we go through a proposed zoning ordinance, we, we look at the text. And I think that would be useful to do. And I guess I don't know whether, so we would be normally meeting, continuing our meeting to, to October 2nd. I don't know whether the planning and development committee would want to continue as part of that or whether they would want to do it on their own schedule.
So I think we all knew when we got our packet last week that it was going to be a busy fall because we already have something scheduled with you on October 2nd. It's the ADU. So yes, I think we would be more than happy to continue this, keep the public hearing open so that we continue with the public comment. I think it's, to your point, we didn't discuss the meat of the ordinance. We discussed the broad terms of what 40B, 40R, and everything is. So I think folks got a good dose of zoning tonight and I think our next meeting should be getting into the weeds. So.
Any further comment?
Sorry, thank you. So as the third city councillor that sits on the planning and development committee, I would agree. I think continuing this, I certainly don't think this is ready to come out. I think we need to understand the details a whole lot more than we have. I've learned a lot tonight, as I'm sure the general public has as well. So firstly, from that perspective, I think we should keep this in. Secondarily, I just want to hit on a couple of points that have been made most recently. So firstly, as Counselor Wright just said, I think it's important for the public to understand that even as city councillors, we are not privy to this development agreement that the administration is currently working on with the developer. So I have not seen it myself. There is a subset of city councillors that the mayor has been working with and has seen that development agreement, but the vast majority of us have not seen that at this point. So I just want the public to make sure that you understand that as you walk out tonight. the public to make sure that you understand that as you walk out tonight. And then thirdly, to what Counselor Khan said, I think it is really important to understand that we have really limited our discussion to what's currently inside the red line. I guess that's a dash line as well. We've moved from a black dash line to a red dash line. But we have limited our discussion to that, because that is what the developer has defined. But as we learned tonight, the site is actually much larger than that. And while I'm not necessarily going to stand here and say that I want to see the shahs torn down, I think that's a valuable asset to the city. I think we do need to understand that, so just above the red dash line, where the roof is black, I guess, you know, that's a massage envy, I think maybe a liquor store. They are, those pieces are owned by this developer. And so there is the possibility for some expansion, so that we could have a less dense building. So rather than one massive building, there is some potential that we could go back to the developer and say, you know, could you cut this into some smaller buildings so that it's not quite so densely, but still get to the same unit number? So that if, you know, I'm hearing that they couldn't get to the unit number based on what's inside the red dash line, couldn't we expand it somewhat, not exactly taking over the entire 11 acres, but expand it to some perspective that would allow us to still have an economically viable site with 25% affordability and a higher density or higher number of units? So I think there's a lot of places where we can negotiate with this. But again, I need the public to understand that if the negotiation is being done as the friendly 40B, that is happening between the administration and the developer, and I, as a city councillor, am not privy to that. So you're certainly not privy to that. And so that's a really important point for me. I want to make sure everyone understands. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else at this point? Or if not, I would accept a motion to, from the planning board's side, to continue the public hearing to October 2nd?
I'd move to continue the...
Hearing?
Hearing to October 2nd.
A motion by Alden. Charles seconds it. And we are all here, so all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Up to you.
I'll make a motion to continue the work of the...